Yeah, what's your action plan? Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing to do, you know, you know, give them a, give them a time.
Morning, how are you? Yeah, Kim Russell. Alright, you look good, huh? Yeah, yeah, we're really, really have, working hard.
If you can get it.
No, they would not give out samples either.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, they're afraid somebody's gonna get a leaf off of that plant, so it's, it's amazing.
Thank you so much.
I think it's a good first move, you know, what, you know, the only thing that worries me.
Yeah.
What is, what is.
Absolutely, absolutely, we do that. Going good? Yeah, absolutely. Oh, good. Yeah, no question.
We like you, it's such a great little campus.
Very nice, yeah, they keep, they say, we have some great folks in physical plant, they take really good care of it. We do, about two hundred and fifty beds. Yeah, actually, we could use about two hundred and fifty more. We're full, I mean, and I, and in fact, I have overflow housing in a local hotel. Uh, actually, we just transferred it to Raff, the LSU Foundation, yeah, Real Estate Foundation, yeah. And we manage it ourselves, yeah, we, we had a third party and it didn't work out very well.
Good morning, how are you? Great to see you.
How you doing, sir?
Yes, yes, I understand first and foremost, both of us.
Yes.
Leaving right after noon.
Good, good to see you after marijuana, I wouldn't know if they give out samples. I left early, I didn't miss out. Really impressed how we're, we're gonna work with that facility.
Actually, he is here, I don't know where he went.
You know, we've, we've never raised more than sixty thousand athletics.
They've already, they're, they're already in the game, aren't they? Good, thank you.
That's always overdone.
This time come down, hopefully next week, Wednesday, Thursday afternoon or Friday morning. I wanna get, uh. Sorry, set up, what?
Aubrey Wilson? Women's basketball. She's definitely turned in. Men's basketball coach has raised, they have to raise one to get it. We've never had ten baseball coaches.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Good, great, thanks, happy to be ready for it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will find out and get it to you.
Okay, I want, uh.
It's, I'm pretty sure it's not next week.
Okay, well, if, if, I wanted to, uh.
Larry, how you doing?
We didn't care whether you were there, we wanted, we wanted him.
Hey, good to see you. Good to see you.
I'm sorry, my guys down there, I've been down there for years, but we have our own little fraternity down there because.
Dan, how you doing? How are you, Dan?
Ms. Tomlinson, will you please call the role?
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Werner?
Present.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armentor? Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shadalein?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett? Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlinson, will you please provide an overview of the proposed bylaw?
Good morning. Alright, so, at the end of the last meeting, we emailed out the proposed bylaw and regulation changes to the board, so you'd receive them in advance. And so what I'm gonna walk through today is just a summary of the changes, um, the substantive changes of the bylaws and the regulations, and kinda the process and the why of how we got here. So, before I jump into the nitty gritty of all our bylaws and regulations, I just wanted to explain the process. So, over the last couple of years, we have received calls and emails and questions of, how do we get something on the agenda? Or, how does the authority work? Or, how do our accreditation standards match our bylaws? And we found some inconsistencies in our bylaws and some things that are not up to standard practice. And so we started keeping track of all of these little things, so that one day we could do a revision, um, to clean up our bylaws, and that's what this is. And, through the process, what we realized is, this is a starting point, this is not an endpoint for our bylaws. So, really, we just needed to get them organized in a way that makes it easy for all of our employees and our staff and our faculty to utilize, and to just clean up some outdated practices and get us up to date with what we need for accreditation. So, with, like I said, this is a starting point, there may be other things as we go through and as you read through the bylaws that we may to, need to address later, but we didn't wanna do a huge comprehensive change to the bylaws, cause it's just a lot to absorb at one time. So, this is really a restructuring, a reorganization of the bylaws and cleaning up just a few things that we've noticed in the last couple of years. Um, through this process, so, it was really, I was the project manager, for lack of a better word, and worked with general counsel, um, Trey and general counsel as well helped with the language and vetting through some of the, the idiosyncrasies in the bylaw, and then also the provost and Dan LaZelle, their offices helped substantially in just looking at, you know, what are some of the conflicts that we have, or some of the, the challenges we have in our bylaws, um, that we were facing, that we needed to update. So, if you wanna go ahead, the way this presentation runs, it runs in line with the redline version of the bylaws. So, an overview of the revisions, it's really small for us, but I think you all can see it on your screen. Um, we wanted to update the style, so, what you see in the redline is a lot of formatting updates. We updated the font to Arial, cause that's actually an LSU-approved font, so, we are brand standard compliant now with our bylaws and regulations. Uh, we reorganized the articles, cause they were actually quite confusing to find certain things, so, we created some new ones, and we'll get into that. We defined days, quorum, and votes, mainly because we had some, um, inconsistencies in our bylaws where quorum was mentioned different times, or sometimes it was two-thirds we needed for a vote, sometimes it was two-thirds of the entire membership, and not who's present, which caused some issues, and I'll show you that when we get through it. Update to current practice, so what we're actually doing today, eliminated inconsistencies. The agenda and the materials that you received for the board meeting were mentioned several times throughout the bylaws in different sections, and once you put it all together, it read differently depending on what section you read. So, we combined all that to, to one area, this is where we talk about the agenda, and this is what the agenda and materials are. And then, again, remove unnecessary items and add unnecessary items for accreditation. I will tell you that Saks has added some requirements for the board, and they were added to the bylaws, and we will get to them, but I will also let you know that just because we added it to the bylaws does not mean we are done. It means we have to do what we added, and Saks will ask what we did, and if we did what we said we would do in our bylaws. So, we're adding it in the bylaws so that it's there, but we have to do it in order to be in compliance with our accreditation. Alright, so, next, update style, like I said, Arial font, uh, we formatted the headers so that we could make a table of contents that was actually clickable. So, in our old bylaws, you had to scroll through to find things, now, on our PDF, when you go online, you can click the table of contents and it'll take you to where you need to go, which is very helpful. We also eliminated gender pronouns, and the reason for this is, they're all male, for the president and especially the chancellors, which is fine, but, as you see, we have a much more diverse staff now, and as we move forward in the future, which is what our bylaws should set us up for, they should probably be a little bit more open to, you know, any gender, and not just males. So, we did eliminate all the male pronouns from the bylaws. So, reorganizing the articles. So, the current, our setup is on the left, and the proposed is on the right, and the major changes are, we, we moved officers and staff of the board to be before meetings, and the reason for that is really simple, officers and staff of the board are definitions of who are officers and staff, and then when you got to the meetings, it used all that terminology. So, you kinda have to define the terminology before you get into a section that uses the terminology, so that's why we reorganized that. And then we added two articles, and when I say we added, what we really did is, we delineated an article for authority for the board and the authority for the president. And that, this was all taken from old Article Eight. So, in Article Eight of our old bylaws, everything was buried in one article under different sections of what authority you had, what authority the president had, and a lot of other minor items. And so, basically, from that article, we've pulled those out and moved them into independent sections, so it's very easy to identify. If anyone has any questions, they can go right to those articles, instead of searching for that section that was kinda buried. So, that's the articles. So, now, let's get into a rough overview of the changes by article. So, Article One was an update to the definition of the university, it's more comprehensive and talks about your constitutional authority over all the institutions. We removed the mention of the Law Center and the Vet, and the School of Vet Med, cause those have been completely absorbed by the LSU campus, that transition is completed, and it's running smoothly. And then also, the Healthcare Services Division is, is now under, um, Health Science Center New Orleans, both financially and in governance. So, that was another, um, removal for the institutions, cause that is now under, um, Health Science Center New Orleans. Yes, question?
Can you talk more about, um, not a whole lot, but.
Yes. Yeah. I've sat through these presentations, I know brevity is appreciative. Yes.
The, the, removing the law school and, and the vet school, just, really briefly, just explain that a little bit.
Yes, so, as part of the one LSU, as we move forward, the law school, wanna say it was twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, the president might correct me, but, we, the LSU main campus is now the governing body of the law school, it is now, it's a dean position that reports to the provost, to the president, and is now, it's a part of LSU, whereas previously, it was its own institution, and the same thing with the School of Veterinary Medicine, it previously was on its own, and it's been absorbed both financially and in the structure of the, of governance under LSU, the main campus, so, the flagship.
They don't need to be listed because.
Yes. Yes, and when we initially did it, it was just because it was so fresh, and we wanted to make sure when people went to our bylaws, and they were like, where'd the law school go? You know, where's Vet Med fall now? They knew it had been shifted, but that has successfully done, everyone is aware of the shift, and so, it doesn't need to be delineated in the bylaws anymore.
So, so, in seventy, nineteen seventy-eight, the law school, and it, it happened to be the only law school in the United States that actually broke away from the institution, and created its own institution, its own chancellor, and, which also requires MOUs with the campus police, uh, student services, anything that the law students need. They happen to be in the middle of campus, but they weren't on campus. This allows that we eliminate sort of that upper level bureaucracy that we had in place, but also, all of the grounds crews and everything had to be treated as though it was a third, almost a third party. And, that, we were requiring MOUs on an annual basis for ground services, and, and the law school thought it was in their best interest, which we believe it is, to look and act more like law schools around the country, but also in their best interest financially, to be a part, as the vet school, is, is, School of Veterinary Medicine does as well. It, it wasn't to their advantage to be hanging out there by themselves, to lobby by themselves, to go to the legislature by themselves, to do all of this on their own, which required almost another layer of bureaucracy, which we eliminated by bringing them under the umbrella of, of, which is, which is where it had been for over a hundred years, is right where it is now.
Right, so that has all been completed, and so we updated the bylaws with that language. The last point is, we defined business day, which, um, may sound funny, but we do have Health Science Centers, they work every day of the week, and so if those employees are reading our bylaws, and business day could be interpreted differently, so they're defined as what a business day is for the LSU campus, which is, you know, Monday through Friday, a weekday. The other reason why we define business day is because one of the inconsistencies in our bylaws was, we weren't consistent with the word "day." So, you would read one sentence, and it would say, this is required three business days, this is required two days, and then sometimes you would read something, and it would say, ten counter days. And so, it was very confusing when a campus would call and say, what's two days? Does that include Saturday and Sunday? Does that not include? And so, to clean up everything in our bylaws, we now have defined business day, and anytime "day" is mentioned, it is very clear whether it's business day or counter day. So, everyone is very clear on timelines. Alright, so, officers and staffs of the board in Article Two, basically just a reorganization to make it very clear, the chair, the chair-elect, and the immediate past chair, and all of their responsibilities are at the top. Here is where accreditation comes in, the chair is now responsible for, um, facilitating an annual self-evaluation of the board. So, every year, you all will have to do a self-evaluation of the board's performance, and that will be Mr. Williams' responsibility this year, and Saks will ask for this. So, Saks has asked this to be added into our bylaws, but they will ask, what have you done? Where is the evaluation? Where are the results? Um, so, you, you have to do it, even though we added it to the bylaws, that satisfies one requirement, but again, we have to do it. The other thing is, um, the chair elections are now at the first regular meeting of the third quarter, our bylaw said second, which wasn't true, cause we have it in September. This, our bylaws were written back when we had a meeting in August and September, and we don't usually have the August meeting, or if we do, that's our, that's our first meeting of the quarter, so, we just keep it as the first meeting of the quarter, instead of the second meeting of the quarter, which would have been this meeting, we would have been doing elections if we were following our current bylaws. We added a one-year clause for all chair posts, and this is basically so that if something happened to Mr. Williams today, Mary couldn't be chair for two years, she could only be chair for a year, and you would still have to hold an election next September, or, you know, the first meeting of the quarter. I do not wish anything on you, Mr. Williams, I know you made a face at me, but, just as a scenario, so you can understand why we added the one-year clause, cause there was no limitation on an interim term.
Just use a hypothetical.
Yes, so, all hypotheticals. So, that's the one-year clause, and then, we updated the job titles, uh, the job titles for the board staff isn't even our titles today. And so, instead of putting job titles in a bylaw, we just said board staff, and so that's anyone that is under the board of supervisors' office, which right now is Jason and myself. And so, it, now the bylaws just say staff of the board, if you wanna add more positions or do other things, you don't have to update the bylaws to do that, so. Alright. Article Three. So, we updated special meeting section, uh, the, the reason for this is, one, special meetings, other than, um, if you look at our history, other than hospital CEAs, are used for emergencies, mostly. So, other than hospital CEAs, the last time we've used a special meeting is for Katrina. And, when you look at our bylaws, it said we'd have to distribute a notice to you by mail. Well, if a hurricane is coming, that is not the most efficient way, so we took, we took, we removed that from the bylaws, it just says we have to notify you. And so that can be phone, we left it broad, so that it can be, you receive a notification for the special meeting. We changed from three counter days to one counter day, so we could be in compliance with public meeting law. Again, the consideration of this is if it's an emergency situation, why would we put a three-day clause on ourselves when there's a one-day clause in the law? And so that just gives us, you know, we can always call a special meeting earlier than one day before, but why would our bylaws limit us, especially in the case of emergency, which is when we really need the special meetings. The other piece is, we voted how you add something to the agenda at a special meeting. So, our current bylaws say that a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the board is required at a special meeting to add something to the agenda. That's eleven of you, quorum of the board is ten. So, basically, what would happen is, if we had a special meeting with ten of you, and you wanted to add something to the bylaw, we couldn't, or to the agenda, we couldn't do it, cause we would need eleven, according to our bylaws. So, what we did is, we said, it's a majority of the members present at the meeting, so that, it, we can work off of who is actually physically here. If we have a quorum, that's ten, and the seven, we would need seven to add something, instead of eleven. So, again, that's one of the inconsistencies we found in our bylaws, that just doesn't serve us. And then we created Section Seven, uh, which is vote, we really just moved it again from that Article Eight, and it defines what a vote of the membership is. So, it's the same language we had before, and we must have seven of you to vote to move something, so seven is always the minimum number to approve an item. Gonna try and move fast, I know it's a lot of information. Alright. Section Six, the agenda, this is also a new section, but it was moved, and what this is, is anything about how the agenda is set, who sets the agenda, the deadlines for the agenda are all in this section, and so the president, fifteen days prior to the meeting, will put together an agenda with input from the chancellors and the officers, and then you all receive a tentative agenda ten days. Um, upon written request of three members, at least seven days before the meeting, you all can add to the agenda. The only other thing, so, continuing on with that, then, ten business days prior to the meeting, there will be a consult with the committees if needed about the agenda, and then, you receive all. then you receive all the materials five days before the meeting, so that is the full packet, that's the materials. And then the last stop of the agenda is the Chair. So the Chair has the ultimate authority at the end to approve late submissions and to adjust the agenda. And that is all now in one section of our bylaws, whereas before, it was sprinkled in about six different areas. So now, if you have any questions about the agenda, you just go to this section. And then the second part of that is, the present, the rest of that section is how the President works with internal staff to set deadlines, and what materials need to be provided to the Board for review. All right, Meetings. So, Section Seven is the Required Information. So our bylaws had a very robust section of all the titles that needed to be in a resolution. This included business plans, legal review, conflicts of interest, and what you find in our Board packets is that our academic resolutions, or our research resolutions, or our hospital resolutions, or, not our hospital, but more of our partnership resolutions for internships and different practices, would have all the headers that our bylaws required and said NA, 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 NA. And they were meeting our bylaw requirements, but it, our bylaws weren't flexible for our other proposals that we receive. In review of this, so I talked about the process. I worked out all the 50 flagship universities' bylaws in this process, also looked at bylaws in the state, and I couldn't find one of them that did this. What most offices do is they have a separate guide that is not in their bylaws of how you prepare materials for the Board. And so in 2015, we did prepare a style guide for the campuses, so they knew what to put in. And so now, we're moving it to a style guide that's flexible, that we can update as different needs come up, and we don't have this very concrete item in our bylaws that is unnecessary. So that is one deletion from the bylaws, but it's really just moving to a more flexible endeavor for the Office and for you all, if you want more information than what our bylaws had in there. All right. Next article, Order of Business, so Updates and Changes. We actually updated the Order of Business to reflect how our Agenda Order of Business is now. It wasn't, we didn't follow the order in the bylaws. And then, we removed the in-writing requirement for committee recommendations. So, what that means is, committees used to meet on a different day than Board meetings, and they would write up a recommendation to the full Board on what they received. Well, we don't do that anymore. We do it all in person, it's all moved in person. The Chair doesn't write a note for everyone to pass around and put it in writing that this is what the Board recommended. So, we didn't want to limit ourselves to in-writing, in case that ever came back on us, that we didn't put it in writing before you moved on that. And you'll see that come up again when we talk about approvals for the full Board. And then, we updated Section Four of the Meetings. Basically, this was just cleaning up things so that it was all in one place. And then, we had a clause that said all matters requiring Board action may be acted on, even though not carried on the agenda, and that is a violation of public meeting law. So we removed that from our bylaws. You have to add something to an agenda before you can move on it. And then, again, each resolution shall be reduced to writing. So, most of our resolutions are reduced to writing and presented to you in the packet, but if you make amendments in the meeting, I capture it, but it's not that we write it down and pass it around to everyone to approve right before you vote on it. It's done vocally, it's done in person, so that in-writing clause, again, is not our current practice. All right, Article Five. We reordered the sections, and then we moved everything for Executive Committee to one spot. So if you want to know who's on Executive Committee, what they do, it is all in one spot and location, and again, removed written recommendation, so you would have had to put it in writing. Next, we updated the Committees. So we combined Academic and Research, since what they do is very hand-in-hand, our faculty are doing both, our mission is fulfilling both, and it just made more sense to combine those Committees. We updated the names, so now it's just Finance Committee, instead of the long Finance Infrastructure and Core Development Committee, so it's very brief now. And we actually updated the Healthcare and Medical Education Committee, because that's what we've been calling it, but that is not what was in our bylaws. So we updated it to what we use now. And then, we removed Dormant Committees. So Legislative Public Policy and Information, and that Media Relations Task Force, those really are being absorbed by the new External Affairs Committee, which we'll get into on the next slide. The Scholarship Review Committee, so in title, you would think that means all our scholarships for all our campuses, but in description, that committee was just for your Board scholarship. And we don't do it that way. The last two changes we've made on the Board Scholarship, we've run through a small subset of Board members that were appointed by the Chair to review the policy, and then brought up through Academic Committee. So we haven't, we didn't even utilize the Committee the last two times we've made changes to the Board Scholarship. The Flagship Committee is based off of our old strategic plan, which we are no longer under the flagship strategic plan, so that, again, was dormant, and then, like I said, Media Relations went to the new Committee. So the new Committees, Affiliated Organizations and Oversight Committee, this is, again, to help organize all the different transactions that are happening with our affiliated organizations, and really put them under one Chair and one Committee to oversee those transactions and interactions with our affiliated organizations. External Affairs, again, is really looking at our branding, our communication, and then any policy issues that, you know, the university or the Board may want to take a stance on. And Legal Affairs is, again, to keep the Board up to date on any pending litigation, anything that the legislator may have done, which Robert has an item today he'll talk about, to keep us updated and current with all of the changes that happen, both federal, state, and local, with any legal and policy items that we need to stay up to date in, especially for the Board. All right. I'm trying to move right along. Okay. This section, if you look at the, it was about how people send communications to the President, and it was that people had to send things to the President, like 15 days in advance, and had to put it in writing, and we move a lot faster than that now. So, we removed those deadlines, we don't follow them, and, you know, everything's through email now, so things move a lot faster. All right. Authority of the Board, so Updates and Changes. So this is the major section that we moved, and we made one addition. I should mention, I also worked with Chad Bracken, our Internal Auditor on these bylaw revisions, and one of the things that got pointed out is that we need to be very specific in our bylaws, that any transaction or payment of benefit from an affiliated organization to an employee must be Board-approved. And so our language was a little loose before in our bylaws, and this really just kind of made it abundantly clear that the Board has to approve any transactions for one of its employees that receives a supplemental benefit from an affiliated organization. And then, when I say we updated matters related to personnel to match PM 69, we did not change any authority delegations at all. Basically, we reorganized them, so that section reads about, you have authority over the President, and then you have authority over the chancellors, and then you have authority over athletics. Previously, it had athletics above the chancellors, and that is just not our priority, so we wanted to make sure it matched PM 69 and that it was a priority. So, Authority of the Board, this is, again, a reorganization of sections, and then you'll see there is an addition of six, or three sections, starting with Section Six. A Review of the Mission, again, the accreditors have said the Board has to review the mission of the institution. So we put it in the bylaws, but that means you have to do it. Section Seven is, again, compliance with accreditation. Basically says that you all have to follow the ethics code, you all have to act in what's in best interest of the institution, and not for yourself's interest, and that any conflicts, you know, you would, you would always serve in what is best interest of the institution. And then Section Eight is just removal of Board members. And in case you didn't know, it's actually a revised statute, and it's two-thirds of the legislator to vote to remove you from the Board. But now, that specific statute is listed in our bylaws, and that was, again, the accreditors like to see that we have that information in our bylaws. That one, we don't have to act on, but that's an accreditation one. All right. So, let's see, we're on Article Eight, and again, we created a new section, and this is from the Authority of the President, and it's, we did not change the Authority of the President. Again, didn't really mess with it that much, we just created a new section from the buried Article Eight from our old bylaws. The one change we did make, and part of it is because it didn't really, it wasn't necessary, is that our bylaws had a clause that the President had delegation of authority for personnel actions, for personnel actions policy for two years. And that was done at the initial transition of the President-Translayer position. So when we changed the bylaws to one President, what they put in the bylaws at that time was, okay, this is a new thing, we're not sure how this new position is going to work, so let's put in a clause of two years to see how personnel actions should be delegated. What this has meant in the last six years is that every two years, we have to do a bylaw revision to update that date. And when I worked with General Counsel and with Trey in the General Counsel's Office to really look at this, it was unnecessary because we already have a section for your delegation of personnel authority in the bylaws. There's already a section of what the President can do for personnel actions in the bylaws, and then we have PM 69. So, if everyone's comfortable and this is working, there's no reason to have a two-year deadline, especially set in our bylaws that we have to update every two years. You know, it's best to remove it, we have all the things in place for these delegations, so it's unnecessary clause. The other reason why we can remove it is, you can always do things by resolution. So the Board could always write a resolution that says, we want to do a clause for two years, and that's actually a more effective way of doing it, because then we don't have to update the bylaws every two years. We can just keep track of resolutions where you have delegated authority with timelines, because it's really hard to keep track of bylaws when they have dates in them. All right. Article Four. We changed the name of the President's Advisory Council to the President's Leadership Council, and we moved the Council of Chief Academic Officers and the Executive Graduate Council to the Regulations of the Board. And the reason for this is, they were already in Regulations, and then the regulation said C bylaws, which is extremely inefficient for someone to, when they're looking, they have to jump around. And so, our regulations are very set, so we figured, if it's very detailed there, let's let it be very detailed there, and not have these lines that say, see Regulations, see bylaws. It's just not user-friendly. Section Eight. We moved, again, Section Eight to the Authority of the President. The only other things is that we deleted C 1 through 3, because it conflicted with other agenda language. So C 1 through 3 was basically that the Chair of the Board managed the entire agenda process, which I don't know, I don't know if Mr. Williams wanted to be responsible for the agenda from the beginning to end, but it conflicted with the other language we had, which was that the President starts the agenda and the Chair kind of ends it. And it also said that five Board members could add something to the agenda, whereas other part in our bylaws said three. So again, it was very confusing, do we need three Board members? Do we need five? So we just deleted this part and kept it consistent with the other language we had in our bylaws, where it's just three Board members can add something to the agenda. And then, I think that's it for that one. Section Nine. We're almost done. Again, we moved this to create, to move to Authority of the Board, and then, again, we deleted the Required Information, because that'll move to a flexible style guide, and then there was a more redundant verbiage about how the agenda is done. And actually, D 3 had said that in some instances, you all need to approve RFPs and invitations to bid before we did it, which is in direct conflict of the autonomy that was given in Procurement Code. So that led to some confusion with our current Procurement Code of, you know, we have autonomy to do RFPs and then come with you with the final bids, but then our bylaws say, sometimes you need to come before you do the RFP. So we removed that because it conflicts with the autonomy. And then I and J were unnecessary clauses in our bylaws. All right, so we're moving right along. We, all we did with our academic staff is we reordered the sections, so their duties are first, and then academic freedom is second, but we did not edit any of their duties or their academic freedom. We just put the Duty section first, we thought that made more sense. And then finally, we defined days for bylaws, so it's 30 calendar days, before it just said 30 days. So that was unclear, did that mean business? Did that mean calendar? So now, 30, 30 calendar days, or by announcement at a Board meeting, we can do amendments or appeals of the bylaws. That is the bylaws. One more, just the Regulations, real quick. But do we have questions on the bylaws before we jump to the Regulations? Okay. Oh, yes, Larry, go ahead.
Just a clarification for the Board. In Article One, the removal of the Healthcare Services Division as a separate unit, and placing it under the Healthcare, Health Sciences Center in New Orleans, that's fine. I think we need to recognize that does not include the financial aspects, because they have a different line of funding through the legislature, they have a separate tax ID, a host of other issues related to funding for the legacy costs from the previous hospitals, so that will still not all come under the Health Sciences Center, I'm assuming.
Can we go back to Slide Number Six? This is the part you're referring to, Dr.?
Yes.
So, are you saying?
No, I'm just saying that administratively, we are already running the Healthcare Services Division.
Okay.
But it wants everybody to recognize that we cannot just merge the financial aspect of that division, because that in statute is different, and has a separate funding line, because that's what ran all the southern hospitals. And that is still funding the legacy costs, the active charity hospital in Lali Camp and so forth, so that will remain separate.
So, do we need to articulate that here?
That's up to the bylaws.
That's a good question for Tom.
Tom? Better be safe than sorry.
Yeah, because in governance, they're under...
It's simply governance, I think, that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to articulate it in this, in the bylaws.
All right. We're aware of it, it's on the record.
Okay. Just point of information.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and then the final change is the Regulations. This is not a major change. We updated the outline, so it used a weird numbering system, and now it matches the same numbering system we use in the bylaws. And then, they had some incorrect references to the bylaws and Regulations, and so we just removed those incorrect references. Again, added the Executive Grad Council, which we mentioned, and then it had an index in the back of keywords that had never been updated or kept up to date, and so we just removed the index. Now that everything is in a PDF, if you need to find a word, you can search pretty easily, or most of the time, people just call the Board Office, so the index was pretty unnecessary and wasn't up to date. All right, are there any other questions?
Is there a motion to approve the amendments to the bylaws as presented?
Move.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
Stephanie, thank you for that, and gone through a couple. I would just ask, Tom, have you had a, I'm assuming you're good on all these changes?
Yeah, first of all, as you all are wont to do, I think you should acknowledge the work that Stephanie has put in on this. This has been a gargantuan effort over the course of the past, once to survey the various other Boards and what they do, as well as going through and actually trying to make sense of the bylaws, which have been, you know, cobbled together over the course of time and changed over the course of time. We, Office of General Counsel has reviewed them, I think we're comfortable with where this, what the changes are. There may be, you know, minor changes, this is sort of an evolving document, and as we work through this and get through the cleaned-up version, there may be one or two things that we come back to you with additionally, but I think in its current, what's proposed today from a legal standpoint passes muster.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries, the amendments to the bylaws are approved, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the meeting of the Board of Supervisors is now adjourned, and we will now move into our Committee Meetings. First of all, are there any individuals registered for public comment?
No.
All right, we will now move into our Committee Meetings. Mr. Anderson, would you please convene the Academic Affairs Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Secretary, Karl Rhodes.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Armentor?
Mr. Shadalein?
Here.
Mr. Ms. Jones?
Excuse me.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. I'll call on Dr. Haynes to present the items under consideration. Dr. Haynes?
Thank you. So there are two items today presented to the committee. The first is a proposal from LSU Alexandria, which is seeking a proposed Bachelor of Science in Kinesiology. Kinesiology currently is a concentration in its Bachelor of General Studies degree, and there has been sufficient demand among the students that they are now in a space where they are prepared to put this forward as its own full bachelor's degree, and they provided substantial support, both in terms of student demand and in terms of workforce demand as well. So that's the first proposal.
Any questions? Okay, we need a motion to...
So move.
Second. Have seconds to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries.
Thank you. So the second item is to create a new master's degree, or master's of science degree in child and family studies. This is in part bringing to close the transition years ago of moving the rubric of human ecology, in which there were a variety of concentrations, textiles, and food and nutrition, moved into the college of agriculture and other pieces. This in part moved to the college of human science and education. And while the bachelor's degree has been, the, the change in the name has been appropriate, that was not done for the masters or the PhD. Those have both been sort of fallow. At this point, the faculty are prepared to move that old master's of human ecology with a particular concentration to create the masters for child and family studies within that degree program. And this will provide opportunities for individuals who are interested in moving into a variety of different opportunities, working with communities across issues that are relevant to those, especially nonprofit groups or other sorts of community groups focused on building and strengthening families.
Okay, you've heard the presentation on the request and reasons for that. Anybody have any questions about that?
Make a motion to approve.
There are a motion, you need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries. The third item is just a presentation that we're going to have on the LSU's conference admission process, and, uh, let's, uh, please, if you're going to give that to us, please come forward, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, President Alexander, members of the board. I am pleased to stand before you today to discuss the extraordinary Fall 2018 freshman class that we just recruited. You know, it was just around this time last year where I sat with then Provost Rick Kubek, and together we discussed the possibility of studying history here at LSU. Consideration of enrolling at the largest class ever at LSU. Back then, in September of last year, the goal started to kind of be shaped around this idea of getting to a class of about fifty-seven, twenty-five students, which really would exceed the largest class ever to come to LSU. Appropriately with the, the mix of resident, non-resident students and that enrollment mix being considered. I am here this morning to really stand here proudly of the fact that we have achieved that goal. The first ninety days of my time here at LSU was spent benchmarking every aspect of our operation in the recruitment of students and the admission of students here at LSU. For me, the measuring stick has always been very clear. I've been doing this for twenty years and have served twenty-eight different institutions. But the measuring stick for me is number one, to ensure that the practices that we're employing are informed by the most current research available to us as educators. And number two, that our operation is aligned with the very best practices in the country to ensure that we are serving students, families, and communities in our state to the best of our ability, and to ensure that that benchmark of best practice can be replicated here locally. Needless to say, every aspect of our operation through that assessment needed to be reconsidered and re-engineered. So while there's so much focus in a recent conversation around holistic review, the truth is that we changed hundreds of things in our operation. Perhaps many of these things having a much deeper impact in the overall success of the recruitment of this class. Take for example, this year, the introduction and use of big data and data analytics wasn't present at LSU. We brought that to bear this past year. And I can commit to you this morning that data will always inform our decisions, and we will not move without any decision being informed by the best data that we have. The use of big data has led to the re-alignment of our travel and recruitment, spending time, effort, and resources in areas with precision and accuracy. In-state, here in Louisiana, we committed that we were going to recruit every single parish in the state of Louisiana, and we did just that. A commitment that would allow us to significantly make ourselves available to students and families in every community across the state. That is critically important. As so many of us think of admissions, college admissions being such a black box, well, we can be of better service to students and families, but we have to be present in every parish. Using the most, the most cutting-edge research, we re-engineered the communication and marketing effort of our operation. The research tells us that the number-one reason why students choose the college they ultimately attend is because of their perceived academic reputation of the institution they ultimately pick. Because of that, we shifted our messaging this past year to highlight the extraordinary academic reputation of LSU, our highly acclaimed faculty that teach on this campus, and the extraordinary research that's happening in our labs across this campus. This message puts us on par with the very best public institutions in the country. And this very message resonated loudly and profoundly across the recruitment cycle. We revamped our campus programs like open house and created new opportunities for students who are coming to make sure that we are best serving them. This required a deep engagement from colleges and a significant willingness to engage in more robust recruitment campaigns throughout the cycle. So I give my sincere gratitude publicly to the college, the campus colleagues for all their work this past year. Last year, we visited, or last spring, we visited with you to discuss a shift in our scholarships to a more competitive scholarship in the marketplace, yet still being able to balance the, the awarding of scholarship with net tuition revenue. We were successful in that request, and we were successful in the return we got with the new scholarship packages. We introduced new technology in our operation to move away from a manual operation to a much more automated operation, to move from a resource-intensive, human resource-intensive operation to a more seamless and automated, tech-savvy operation. This allowed us to restructure the entire staff, moving almost fifteen staff members out of operations to repurpose their time and a better use of their time, and making sure that our operation is a current day structure in college admissions that is lean, focused, efficient, and more importantly, results-driven. And so, yes, we did introduce holistic review. Holistic review is found in the research to be the most rigorous and strongest assessment of students in the college admissions process. For us, holistic review has done three main things. Number one, it has enhanced the rigor, the quality, and the depth of our assessment of all applications submitted to LSU. Number two, it allowed us to deepen our conception of merit by increasing the number of variables that are considered, and again, variables that we are not manufacturing here locally, instead, variables that are explicitly expressed in the body of literature, in the research, as directly correlating with student success on a college campus like LSU. And we looked for access for students throughout the pool by ensuring a full and comprehensive review in the context of opportunities and challenges that our student applicants have had throughout their life. So the impact of holistic review has really moved this institution forward, practicing admissions that's consistent with research and the best practices in our field. Take for example that only two out of the top fifty public universities in the country, according to US News and World Report, were not holistic review environments. When you look at the flagships, there's about ten flagships across the country who were not holistic review environments. Very early on, I recognized that we were an outlier in the practice of how we select students, and the impacts are very real. Take for example, on virtually every measure of academic excellence, the Fall 2018 freshman class presents stronger qualifications than the class that came in one year ago. Proportions of the admitted class that have had historically less access to LSU, such as low-income students, rural students, students coming from under-resourced schools, and other historically underrepresented subpopulations, have significantly increased in their representation on our campus here at LSU. When you look at the data, and you look closely at what we have accomplished this year, we have moved the enrollment by more than nine hundred students, still matching the highest ACT in LSU history. Slight increase overall in the GPA. When you look at it by quality bands, the conversations around is quality being lessened by this practice. I can just tell you that it's not the case anywhere I've ever worked, and every other institution that I have served has been a holistic review environment. Here, you see the top end of the ACT bands that are the traditional metric for quality, and you can see that we did exceptionally well with the top end of the pool. In fact, gaining thirty percent more students with ACT thirty-one or above. When you look at the diversity perspective, the students who are historically underrepresented groups, I affectionately call them HUGS. When you look at the HUGS, you see that we, again, exceptionally outperformed the previous year according to ACT bands. And then, really, what has been the objective for most of the elite institutions in the country? These are Pell-eligible students, students who are the highest need, so the lowest-income students. The elite institutions in the country have fixated on the fact that they want to find the, the students who are Pell-eligible, who have the highest degree of accomplishment in the, in the marketplace. This year, we outperformed anything we've ever done, and the, in the comparison, compared to the previous year, it's just outstanding. When you look at what we've done in-state, in-state, we have done very, very well across all of the, the various regions that we do work in. We do need, need to do better, of course, in Alexandria and Lake Charles, and we certainly will double down on that. And nationally, we simply have outperformed anything that we thought we could do. We know, and as we're hearing it, I just got back from the national conference for college admission counseling last week, and let me tell you that people are keenly aware that our enrollment this year has shifted upward, and students that they counted on to be in their enrollment picture are not there. They chose us over them. And that's not just here in the South. Institutions across the spectrum recognize the big shift that LSU made this year. So we are tremendously, tremendously excited about the work that we've done. When we focus a little bit more on the, the topic at hand, the comprehensive review. You know, for the last forty years, the research has found that a comprehensive review of applications is necessary to best assess students' potential to succeed on a college campus like LSU. In fact, according to the research, the highest correlation to student success in the evaluation process exists when the student background, high school grade point average, ACT, or SAT, are evaluated for admissions, along with non-academic variables that are found in the body of literature that directly correlate positively to student success. That is the strongest assessment in college admissions that we know of today, evidenced by the research. Absent the holistic review, you're lessening the, the strength of assessment in your candidates. According to the ACT study from 2015, and I'm going to quote them directly, this is the ACT. They're saying behavioral skills of motivation levels, social engagement, and self-regulation, among other non-academic variables, have shown to predict academic achievement above and beyond academic measures, such as high school grade point average and board scores. In another study, the most recent study they've done, ACT in 2018, said, preparation for college, career, or life requires skills and competencies for multiple domains. Academic skills, whether focused solely on math or reading, or more broadly to include science, are clearly essential to the, to most definitions of post-secondary success. But alone, they are not sufficient to ensure the predictive success of your students. Can't get any clearer than that from the testing agency themselves. So at LSU, our holistic review process was anchored in assessing students on the most current research available to what matters in selection. I would argue that our review this year was the most rigorous review ever employed at LSU. So in our review process, we start with a thorough and comprehensive review of the high school transcript. Again, according to the ACT, high schools, high school rigor matters, and not all GPAs are created equal. The idea that we can have a set GPA of three-point-oh, and that's fine, is not good enough, according to the testing agency. Therefore, we want to make sure that we are evaluating high school experience rigorously. Here's what we want to know. When we look at a transcript, we look very carefully at the choices that the students have made. We are looking at what was available in the high school environment, and what did you choose to take? Rigor matters, directly correlates with the success of students. So it doesn't tell me enough if you just have a three-point-oh. I need to know what courses were available and what did you decide to take? That, in our business, is called the challenge towards the curriculum.
Jose, that also includes your senior year?
Yes.
That get thrown out the window by many students, and many have said the biggest waste of time in high school is a senior year.
Yes.
But when you take a look at the senior year, it becomes a, a important piece of puzzle.
Absolutely. Yeah, Mr. President has heard me say this now multiple times, and he's stealing my thunder. So. Grade trends on our transcripts, right? Grade trends are so important. Is a student doing better as they progress over the course of four years, or are they declining in their performance? Do they have an interruption? You know, again, I'm walking into an environment here at LSU and in Louisiana where there was a significant incident that happened a couple of years ago with the flood, right? So students who don't have a three-point-oh, perhaps because they were disrupted in what their life circumstance was, we need to look at them more comprehensively to understand that in context and make a better decision. The fact that perhaps they were misplaced from their family does not measure their academic potential adequately enough. We need to look closely to see how are they trending academically year to year? And then senior year schedule. Senior year schedule has been shown throughout the research as being significantly correlated to the success, especially in the first year of students. So a student who's taking a full course load in their senior year matters greatly versus a student who decides to take a lighter set of courses in their senior year, perhaps to do a field experience. Again, for a place like LSU that is incredibly rigorous, that tells us a whole lot about their transition and what we need to understand about them. Lastly, the preparation for the major of their intended interest. Again, a student, we need to see a student who's selecting to go and study engineering, we want to see that student having stepped up to take the highest levels of math and in, math and science in their, in their high school. It doesn't really do as much good to just know that they have a three-point-oh, and that's just the fact. So the nature of the assessment is significantly different than what we've done before. And as I described, this assessment is, in keeping... And as I described, this assessment is in keeping with best practices across the country in assessing academic work in college admissions. This is the standard. In addition to the review of the board scores and high school performance, the research outlines that additional non-academic or non-cognitive variables and characteristics that a student possesses have been found to positively correlate with their success in this environment. There's over 40 years of research in this. This isn't new stuff. We simply know so much more than what we knew 20 years ago in terms of college admissions and selection. So we certainly understand that institutions across the country have taken this research and have optimized them in practice. We can learn a lot from those institutions, and I've been at institutions that have done that to push the boundaries of selection. According to the seminal researcher in this area, Bill Sedlasek, "Non-cognitive variables or non-academic variables that correlate positively to student success include variables related to their adjustment into the environment, motivations, and perceptions." These are variables that are found in a research directly related to student success. Again, important to note, these are not variables we're manufacturing, or we're saying, "We hope a student feels or looks this way." These are evidence-based characteristics that we're looking for. Characteristics such as a realistic self-appraisal in an academic setting, meaning you fully understand where you stand relative to math, relative to English, you are clear about your strengths and weaknesses, a willingness to engage deeply in the learning process and research process, especially the research plate, uh, process if you're coming to a place like LSU, and your discipline academically. Are you a student who's going to be able to come onto this campus and make sure that you have enough self-regulation to maintain course and do well in a rigorous environment? In addition to the newest research around grit, we introduced another critical element to the way that we look at students. That is grit. Grit is one part passion given towards a given area of study and one part perseverance, working directly and steadily towards your goal despite the challenges and however many times you might get da, you might get knocked down. Do you get back up and fight again? Grit is interesting, and the research has found that students at an elite university who scored higher in grit had higher GPAs despite low SAT scores. In fact, the research is directly correlating that gritty students, there is an inverse relationship with IQ and board score attainment. To ensure the quality of our evaluation, every application is read two times in our environment. Quality assurance is critically important in this kind of work. Every decision must have an agreement between two evaluators. Every application where there is not an achievement of the two decisions being similar, we end up moving to a group of admission offices, officers to deliberate on the assessment and finalize the review. The depth and rigor of this evaluation process is the gold standard in college admissions. It's the way it's practiced in this day and age in college admissions. We have successfully moved LSU into this practice of holistic review, and I think we can lead nationally on how we select students in a process that's anchored squarely in research and best practice. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as I close this morning, I want to take one and make one final attempt to put into context the historic nature of what we've accomplished in this class. Broadly speaking, the fall 2018 class achieved the largest applicant pool in LSU history. A significant growth in the final enrollment with more than 900 students deciding to come to LSU, still matching the highest ACT average in LSU history and the highest grade point average. Non-residents this year increased by 46% with new, new states coming into the mix from New Jersey, Pennsylvania, DC, the DC metro area, North Carolina, and California. We had all-time-high enrollments coming from Georgia, Florida, and Texas, three critical states for us to win out every enrollment cycle. Louisiana residents increased from 4,000 students last year enrolled to more than 4,600 students enrolled this year. We received the largest number of honors college applications this year. It was the largest in history, with more than 700 honor students enrolling in the final analysis, with a 70% gain in historically underrepresented students in the honors college, 61% more Pell-eligible students in the honors college, phenomenal, and the strongest ACT and GPA in our history in the honors college. The total class overall had 27% of the class being Pell-eligible students, with 57% more Pell-eligible students with an ACT 30 or above. Simply phenomenal. Mr. Chairman, we are simply the envy of the nation. I heard it all last week. The gains in this year's class is truly uncommon. It's just not something that regularly happens. And unquestionably, the significant gains that we have here at LSU has not been shared across the SEC directly. We lead the way in the SEC among our competitors, perhaps among all publics in the country. I might stretch it based on what I heard last year, perhaps the best overall in higher education in the country. I am proud to represent my team this morning, who led the way in this work, our community here at LSU, and the state of Louisiana, as we send a strong message across the landscape of higher education that LSU is a leader in this space, and we are here to lead among our competitors. Mr. Chairman, President, this concludes my report this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a, that report is really what we, we needed to hear at this point in time. The information you gave, you covered all the areas. We see the results this year, and I can totally appreciate what you're talking about. I've been on this board for a long time. And I have had, I have had students come to me over the years that just barely missed being able to come here. And these students were hard workers. They may have been from rural, smaller schools. I graduated from a huge class of 32.
Oh, wow.
And, and we were competing with the elite schools in the metropolitan areas that had lots more resources and other things to work with. And it was a sad time for me over these years to have to tell someone that, you know, you're close, but you're not quite there to get in, not looking at all the other factors around that. And usually, when you find these students that are, that have done well, but are just short, that have a work ethic that's beyond what many students have, when they get the opportunity to get involved and get into school, they're the ones that really go up the ladder and, and do the best work and end up doing the best job when they, when they finish, and no matter what field they're going into.
Right.
I think that presentation was exceptional. My problem is, why don't we do a better job of introducing the presenter? I just had your name and, and one of you, give you a little bit about your background and what you do here. I don't know, King or...
Jose, tell them your experience. Jose Avilas, we, we picked off from the University of Buffalo where he had exceptional record. And we figured if you can recruit kids to Buffalo, you could do a mu, much, much better job having LSU's title where you go. Jose, tell them a little bit about your background and your team.
Sure thing. So, yes, I've, I've been in college admissions or enrollment for the last 20 years. I'm entering the 20, my 21st year. And I've worked for eight different institutions, from the most selective school in the country to a community college. And I have a proud record over the last three institutions now, counting LSU, of having led flagship institutions in this work. My record at Buffalo and Delaware stands historic in nature for those institutions. It's not by accident, and this year was not by accident. When you align your practices with research and best practices, and you execute at a high level, and you focus on results and not just effort, this is the kind of outcome you can have. So I am proud to represent LSU because I know, I, I, you're right, President, that, you know, we had historic gains at Buffalo, nothing like this. So when you bring in best practices and research to a place like LSU, the brand equity of this institution and how institute, how students respond to those three letters, LSU, has been phenomenal. I think about the, the admitted student reception we had in New York City, standing room only, over 200 students. We didn't do much work in the fall last year in New York. We just didn't get there. But when we saw the applicants in New York in the admitted class in New York City, we decided in the spring that we were going to do a reception to hold any, to, to host any student who had been admitted so they can find out a little bit more. We thought we would have about, maybe about 20 students, 25 students, and that would be worth our time too as non-residents. We had over 200 students standing room only. So aligning the work we do and anchoring it in research and best practices is critical to, to the results that we drive. And I'm, I've been in this work for over 20, 20 years now.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment or question. First of all, I'm, I'm glad to hear that my friend, Mr. Anderson, I'm assuming you graduated in the top 32 of... But, you know, I'm so impressed with this, and impressed with your presentation and what the numbers show, and particularly something you said about the use of analytics and, and obviously a scientific approach and gathering data, and just how obviously effective that is. And as, as a new board member who frankly never heard a holistic admission six months ago, it's just really impressive, and I'm really proud of the work you guys have done.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman. Jose, do you think you have the right safeguards in place, looking at 10 years from now, when you look at that we don't end up just playing the numbers game on admission, and that you always worry about politics gets involved in the admission process, and that you wake up 10 years from now, and, and the students, the, the quality of the students goes down versus then you end up playing the numbers game? Do you have those kind of safeguards you feel good about your, your process, admissions process you're going to go through?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there, there hasn't been a cycle, again, this is the first institution I've transitioned to that does not practice holistic review. Outside of the community college, everywhere else, holistic review has been the norm of the day. And so I have not had a cycle at any point that I've led where the quality of the class was lesser than the previous year. Again, when, when, when then Provost Rick Kubek and I talked about a historic class, we're talking about going from 4,900 to 5,700, I've never, I've never experienced that. I've never shepherd a community through that kind of gain. I was concerned that maybe there would have to be some trade-offs along the way, and that we would have to discuss as a community. I would not make that trade-off individually. My staff would not make that trade-off. We would be talking as a community about what, you know, what we're up against. But we manage that profile carefully on a daily basis, using analytics on a daily basis to make sure that we are setting the best class possible for LSU. Those safeguards are there. They, we look at them every single day. So I'm not concerned that we're going to go off. The other commitment, and for the, the community who knows me knows this very well, I'm not in this for numbers. That's not what I've gotten into this work. I was the first in my family to go to college. I grew up in a depth of poverty in this country. The reality is that we need to make sure that when we are making an assessment, that we are confident that the student that we are providing access to, to this environment has the potential and promise to be successful here at LSU, not anywhere else, that they are the best fit and are equipped to be successful here. And if they're not, it's not in our best interest to provide access. We destroy their life, frankly, by allowing them to come in, get, gain loan indebtedness, and then leave without a degree. That doesn't serve anyone well. So I make the commitment to this board publicly that will not happen under my leadership.
Blake? Thank you so much for that. And Ronnie, I'll, I'll say it's a proud graduate of Bayou Shico High School. It was 32, it was 32 as well, in my graduating class. Speaking, kind of echoing Ronnie's comments, I, I think that for those of us who have been on the board for a while, I think we have always talked about the need to be more aggressive in our admissions or in our recruiting. I, I think we have felt like we've seen too many of our kids go elsewhere because we didn't recruit them as well. And so I think all of us are excited about the efforts and the emphasis on, on making sure that we're reaching out throughout the state and, and throughout the nation to drive more admissions into our process. And I think echoing Ronnie's comments, I know that I have, over the 10 years I've been on this board, seen so many cases where kids want to come here, they barely missed one of the criterias. I've watched those kids go to other universities here in the state and excel and do very well. But they wanted to be a Tiger first, and they just couldn't get in. And so I think, I, I think looking at this on a more comprehensive, holistic-type approach absolutely is the right thing to do for our kids. And so I appreciate your efforts and appreciate King's effort in driving a more aggressive process in recruiting students to, to LSU and, and giving them every chance to, to succeed. Kind of, I, I think the key thing for us to do, because I, I know we all, as King always says, it's all about graduation.
Yes.
I think the key thing that we have to make sure that we do is, is we look at these classes and exceptions, is track how they progress, make sure that they're graduating. That will be the test over time that tells us, do we have the process just right? And so it would just encourage us to make sure that we're tracking that success and that indeed these kids are, are graduating.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And I'll say, I'll, I'll take that opportunity to just say that Provost Haney, just this week convened a group, a pretty inspiring group of folks from across campus to sit to discuss, and this isn't the first meeting, but just happened this week, so it's just seared in my mind, that, that entire conversation around student success and retention and our responsibility to these students. Right? Similarly to how we just, we recruited the class and using big data, we can also use big data to aid in finding out how to best support students. And we've done that this year. We've run an analytic model that really is similar to a regression model, but probably a step ahead of a regression model, to identify students across the university who just came in, across, across the freshman class that just came in, who have markers that will need additional proactive outreach. These students have the ability to be successful here at LSU. But the national data tells us the reasons why students leave institutions is not, the number one reason why student departs is not academic. The number one reason that is reported on the national surveys is because of financial distress or because of campus disengagement, the sense that they don't belong, the sense that they're disconnected, right? No one paid any mind to them. It has nothing to do with their ability. So we can use science to find students. We can't do that for 6,000 students in a freshman class, but if we can identify the right quarter, the right thousand or so, that really have markers that over the last 10 years, students like them historically have decided not to return for their second year, we can use that, use, we can find that using regression modeling. And we did that this year for the first time ever. So we have a cohort of students that we know we need to just align our resources, be more proactive in their outreach, have them coming into our meetings. So instead of waiting for the wheels to fall off because they're dissatisfied with something or financially it can't make sense of things, hopefully this research will tell us, these students just need a, a more proactive outreach. And that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jose, I just wanted to commend you. You mentioned that you all had not had the chance to go to New York early on in the year, but went back, and I had the chance to attend one of the admitted student receptions. And the people you brought together in that room, it wasn't just Jose standing up there talking about the great things that were going to happen for these kids at LSU, but a broad spectrum of individuals who were there to talk to the kids and the parents and engage them. I know you took that show on the road to many states as well as every city in Louisiana.
Yes.
And I just want to commend you on that time and that effort and the leadership you showed in that, because it's one thing to get that admissions letter, it's a whole nother thing to have a family sitting there with a million questions, financial, community, and otherwise. And then finally, I wanted to say anecdotally what you were just speaking about, about the community outreach. When having a conversation with my freshmen the other day and asking how things were going, the report back to, the comment back to me was, "Mom, I have this opportunity, SI, tutoring this, this, this. I want you to know, Mom, there's no way we can't be successful here."
Oh, wow.
So I just wanted to add that in and let you all know that the message is getting through. It's not the LSU that you're just a number any longer.
Right.
You have really done an outstanding job in, in educating the families, bringing those kids in from across Louisiana and across the country, and then making sure that that message is getting through, that we are here to support you. So thank you and congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Jose, I just want to tell you that I'm very, very impressed with your presentation, and I think it's great that we're looking at the most available tools and, and processes today, the big data, for example. We're dealing with human beings, and they've got a short time that they're 18 to 21, let's say. And it's great that we're going to capture a lot of those young people and change their lives.
Yes.
By having an opportunity to come here at this school.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. You know, we just saw so many examples, anecdotal examples, that are not really data points, but just the experience of as the students transitioned into the environment this year. And one that comes to mind is one we've consistently talked to the editorial boards about from Donaldsonville, who is a low-income student, has a female in STEM who had a 30 ACT, had a full ride to Notre Dame, and decided in the final day that LSU was the best fit for her over that full ride at Notre Dame. Extraordinary, tough decision to make, but she felt that the connection and the outreach and the relationship she developed with the frontline staff here at LSU was significantly different, and she wanted to stay here in her home state. So we just heard stories like that over and over and over again. That just reinforces the work we're doing, is good work.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank you. I mentioned Shreveport, and I think we've been underperforming in Shreveport as far as recruiting. And it's really, numbers really turned. I'm supportive of the holistic approach and effort. But Shreveport's been losing a lot of, and Bowger, a lot of their top seniors to neighboring universities. And I'm so pleased at the recruiting effort that we're doing.
Yes. And we're going to do, we did well this year, we're going to do better. And you wanted to come out with us, so you're going to come out to high schools with us.
I think we could carry on this conversation all day. It's really interesting and everybody's got good ideas, great work. But I think we need, in essence, after time, we need to conclude the action of this committee.
Ronnie, can I offer something?
Yes.
On this issue, I just wanted to end. During the chairman's report later in the board meeting, I'm going to offer a resolution, but it pertains to this topic, and so I'd like to read it now in context, and then we can vote on it in the afternoon. It's a resolution in support of LSU's comprehensive admissions process. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University Agriculture and Mechanical College, is hereby affirm and support the LSU flagship campuses' comprehensive admissions process. The board acknowledges this process is in accordance with the national best practice among the nation's best performing universities and is currently in practice at 40 out of the 50 flagship universities. Be it further resolved, the board acknowledges research has shown that grade point average in ACT or SAT scores alone do not provide the fullest, most accurate picture of a student's potential success. LSU still requires submission of the core curriculum GPA, overall high school GPA, and an ACT or SAT score. However, by adopting this comprehensive process, LSU is utilizing additional elements and all relevant factors to identify the top talent in the state of Louisiana, the United States of America, and the world who can be successful and contribute to our university. Be it further resolved, the board recognizes that the comprehensive admissions policy is in alignment with the mission of LSU to be a leading research extensive university, challenging undergraduate and graduate students to achieve the highest level of intellectual and personal development. This process does not diminish the standards for admission to the flagship, state flagships' university, but utilizes research and best practice to ensure a student body prepared for the highest levels of intellectual and personal development to drive the state of Louisiana forward. Be it further resolved, and I promise we're done resolving, that the board is committed to ensuring that all kids have a fair opportunity to attend LSU while maintaining the level of academic excellence and achievement that we have worked so hard over the years to achieve. These are not mutually exclusive goals. The 2018 class proves this. We will continue to monitor the outcomes of our admissions process to ensure that all of our goals are being met.
Very good. Okay, that should conclude most of the discussion right now. I need a motion to adjourn. Second somewhere, all right, motion second. Any objections? Hearing none, so move. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the work of our committee.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shadellane, would you please convene the finance committee?
Thank you, sir. Stephanie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shadellane?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. We have two items on the agenda today. First will be an approval of our budget request, and then we'll have an update on our supplier diversity program. So Dan, if you would, walk us through the budget request.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Shadellane and members of the board. Today we are bringing forward, for your considerations, the university's operating budget request to the state for fiscal year 2020, which will begin on July 1st, 2019. This is the first step in the state's budget development process, which will conclude at the end of the 2019 regular legislative session following passage of the appropriations bill, also known as House Bill 1, and approval by the governor. Officially, the combined budget request for all of higher education is developed by the Board of Regents and submitted to the Division of Administration and the Legislature on behalf of all of higher education this year. The Board of Regents will consider this budget request on October 24th, and it will be based on the preliminary formula calculation and other identified budget needs for higher education systems, boards, and agencies. At the same time, the Division of Administration also requests that each post-secondary management board submit information on any operational and expanded need requests for their campuses. Those needs are summarized in Attachment 1 to the resolution. While these requests are unofficial, they do highlight some of the key priorities identified by each campus for state funding, should it become available, for additional state funding should it become available for fiscal year 2020. In total, the requests from LSU campuses for additional funding totals $75.6 million, which would represent just over 20%, a 20% increase in state general fund support for the LSU system if fully funded. This is a significant request for sure, but one that needs to be viewed in the context of a couple factors. First, the fact that LSU's total state general fund support has declined by over $260 million or 40% since fiscal year 2009. And second, the peer comparison data we shared with you at the September board meeting, which showed how far behind our peers we are in terms of funding nationally on a per-student basis. Some highlights from these operational and expanded need requests follow. Overall, the single largest general category represented in the request pertains to general operating budget needs for campuses, and includes such needs as mandated costs, which we discussed at the September board meeting, and inflation, which are expenditure pressures the campuses have continued, that have continued to grow during the past several years without additional state funding. This category represents $25 million or about 33%, a third of the total request. The second largest general category in this request can be characterized as funding for new and expanded educational, research, and outreach programs. Again, there was little or no funding available for either new or expanded programmatic needs during the past decade. This category represents 16, excuse me, 16 and a half million or 22% of the total request. So in total, these first two items are over half of, represent over half of the total request. Other significant request categories include funding for salary increases, funding for academic and student support services such as tutoring and advising, some of the things that Jose just touched on in his presentation, and funding for our IT modernization efforts, which will be costly. We ask for your favorable consideration of this resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So again, this is kind of the start of our budget process and in terms of making the request and working with the Board of Regents to develop that, which will then go for approval legislative sessions.
Yes. Yes, this is very, very, very early on in the process. On October 24th, the Board of Regents will be setting forth their preliminary request, and then it will be forwarded to the Division of Administration, the Legislature, and we'll be off to the races.
Okay. Any questions?
One question.
Sure.
Do you think there's an opportunity or an increase? Or do you think, do you know the answer to that?
I, without my crystal ball, I will, I will tell you, it's, you know, I think there is a commitment. I can tell you there's a commitment on behalf of the Board of Regents to ask for additional funding for all of higher education. And as the governor has stated repeatedly, you know, higher education is a priority. Now there are going to be a lot of priorities now that we're in a period of budget stability. So, you know, what additional incremental revenues may be available are yet to be determined.
Any other questions?
I think that's a yes, Dan, right?
In my way, yes, a yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So move.
Have a motion. Is that a second somewhere? Okay. Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next, we have an update on our supplier diversity program. Dan, will you handle that as well?
Yes, thank you. And I will ask Tyler Carney and Devon Stevenson, who is directly involved with the supplier diversity program, to come up and run us through a brief presentation on where things stand with the supplier diversity initiative.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You will remember that at the September meeting, Sally and Devon provided an update on the supplier diversity program. And in that presentation, they described our general approach for the program, which is to reach, educate, engage, and develop diverse suppliers with the overall goals of increasing participation and really strengthening our network of suppliers at the university. So since the last update, Devon and the team have been very busy, particularly with the engagement and education aspects of our strategy. So the purpose of today's update is really to provide further updates on those recent activities, also some of the upcoming events and initiatives that are underway, and finally to update you on a couple of the performance indicators that we've been tracking. So with that, I'll let Devon walk us through some of the recent activities of the program.
Good morning. So we've been, we've been working to contact members from different databases like the disadvantaged business enterprise, the NOLA Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the Louisiana Economic Development. So we're working to build our network as well as attend different events throughout the state. Just last week, I was able to attend two different events and to do some recruiting and reaching to new suppliers. The supplier diversity program has scheduled two Doing Business with LSU meetings this month. During these meetings, the suppliers will learn about the importance of the business profile. We will educate them about upcoming opportunities and discuss how to do business with LSU. In efforts to ensure that we are reaching and recruiting as many diverse suppliers as possible, these meetings will be joint meetings. Previously, they were one-on-one meetings. So we can reach more. If this is successful and it proves to be effective and productive, we'll continue to do so. The first meeting will be Monday, October 15th, and the second will be Friday, October 19th. There are total, there are a total of 250 suppliers registered in our database. And I do apologize. So with, continuing with our ongoing efforts with our resource agencies, we're also working to hold joint meetings on campus. We'll discuss opportunities to collaborate. We'll discuss opportunities to educate them about the supplier diversity program, as well as encourage them to meet and introduce, again, opportunities to educate and develop our diverse suppliers. Also, I attended the two events I spoke about earlier, the Baton Rouge Metropolitan 13th Annual Business Conference and the Small Business Summit in Shreveport. Both proved to be successful opportunities. In Shreveport, I was able to meet with different resource agencies and provide a list of upcoming construction opportunities in the city of Shreveport to our diverse suppliers. We held a, we had a Master Contract and Diverse Supplier Expo. And we had over 250 suppliers, and 45 of them were diverse suppliers. Everything in construction, to heavy equipment, to printing and promotional, to IT, as well as human resource management. The diverse suppliers were more than excited to participate. They were able to engage with important department, departmental leaders, as well as meet and greet and interact with each other. Nerd Service.net was able to 3D print money clips for visitors for their desk. Mattress by Appointment was able to make meaningful connections, as well as Rocky from Business Furniture Reps, who was more than excited to participate and thought this was a very creative opportunity for our diverse suppliers. The suppliers are also encouraged to follow up with those attendees that visited their booths and encouraged to provide us with updates because they are our success stories. So we're also working on upcoming opportunities, and that will be followed by...
Just to touch base real quick on a couple of the performance indicators that we're tracking. The first of these is the number of diverse suppliers that are enrolled in our system. In order to do business with LSU, you have to be registered as a supplier in our database. Once a vendor is registered and in the database, it allows buyers or campus departments to find them when they're searching for specific commodities or supplies. So in our outreach efforts with diverse suppliers, we encourage them to take the step of registering in the system, including their certifications with those registrations. Once they're in our system, they get contacted by Devon with additional information about the supplier diversity program, including invitations to upcoming events. So enrolling as a supplier is really an important first step in doing business with LSU. In the first quarter of fiscal year 2019, we've enrolled 60 new diverse suppliers. As you can see on the chart, that's a significant increase over recent quarters. By way of comparison, there were 71 new enrollments all of last year, even as the numbers did climb in the latter half of the year. So 60 in a single quarter hopefully indicates that our, all of our outreach efforts are proving effective at introducing the program to vendors and getting them enrolled in our system. In terms of our spend with these diverse suppliers, you saw this slide at the last update, but for the last fiscal year, fiscal year 18, our spend with diverse suppliers was just under $24 million, which was an increase of $4.3 million over fiscal year 17. That amount represents a 23% increase, which was a higher increase than what we're calling total applicable spend. And again, as Sally and Devon explained last time, that applicable spend is really what we spend in goods and services at the university. So we exclude things like salaries, benefits, scholarships, things that don't really involve suppliers, and we wouldn't expect to be impacted by the supplier diversity program. One thing to note is that these numbers on the screen do not include the spend at the Health Science Centers. Because the Health Science Centers are on a different system, we've been careful to make sure we're counting things the same way, categorizing things the same way before we combine them into one university total. We've done that, we're comfortable with those calculations now, so while they're not on the screen, the spend with diverse suppliers at the two Health Science Centers in fiscal year 18 was about $5.3 million, which would bring the university total to about $29 million. As an update to the annual numbers, in the first quarter of fiscal year 19, which just ended, our spend with diverse suppliers was about $6.8 million, which was almost a 40% increase over the first quarter of the previous fiscal year. As you can see, the quarterly numbers have tended to bounce around a bit in the past, and they're sensitive to large purchases in any given quarter. But we will certainly continue to track the quarterly numbers and look to sustain the positive growth in the first quarter of this year. So those are a couple of the performance indicators that we're tracking and will continue to track, and Devon's going to finish with highlighting a couple of the upcoming events.
We are currently hosting meetings with departments as we continue to get the word out and information about the supplier diversity program. Departments are contacting us to request information, contact information for those diverse suppliers that are offering services that they're looking for. We recently, just last week, we were able to meet with Laura Morrow from Facility Services, as well as Roger Huscher with Planning, Design, and Construction to discuss updating the university policy to ensure diverse suppliers are included in the various types of bid opportunities. During this meeting, they expressed their firm support to carry out such policy. We plan to make changes to our internal procedures to ensure... to ensure diverse suppliers are routinely extended opportunities to perform work here on campus. They are also assisting with planning, from what I understand, will be the first construction meet and greet, which will be late January. This meet and greet provides diverse suppliers an opportunity to engage with project managers, general contractors, and subcontractors. The purpose of this event is to engage the suppliers, to educate them about upcoming opportunities with LSU as well as the state, how to do business with LSU, and provide the project managers an opportunity to engage with the diverse suppliers and to learn specifically about the types of work they do. We believe this opportunity will benefit the suppliers, LSU, as well as Louisiana. Southern University and A&amp;M College has expressed an interest in providing opportunities to our supplier, our diverse suppliers as well, and sharing opportunities with their entire system. The printing and promotional suppliers will have an opportunity to engage with departments as well as student organizations later this year, tentatively scheduled. The showcase will tentatively, like I said, be tentatively scheduled in March. The catering showcase is tentatively scheduled in September. And the information technology will be scheduled sometime in February. We selected those commodity areas based on the number of diverse suppliers that are actively participating in the program. We are developing and will be implementing in the upcoming months a university policy that will specifically explain the role of diverse suppliers in the Office of Procurement. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Um, tell us a little bit about the attendees that attended the expo. If y'all have any personal stories.
Well, the attendees, we, we provided a list, and we can provide you, you all with a list at a later date. But we had representatives from different departments across campus, as well as Breck, the, which is, we also had the zoo, and then we had a few other agencies. The Director of Procurement from Grambling State University came down, and we were able to link him with different diverse suppliers as well.
Real quick, 'cause I wanna move it along, but I do, first of all, this is great. I'm glad things are moving in the right direction. I do, I've heard a bunch, and I think it's great that we're doing this. And so it may result in us putting vendors who happen to register with us with different opportunities. But I do wanna make sure that we continue to maintain our original focus, which is expanding the way that LSU does its business. So I'm happy to hear that as a, as a byproduct, folk are getting put with some other opportunities. But let's make sure that what we do is, we, we diversify the way we're doing business.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Also, we wanna, I wanna take the time to review the outreach plan. This is a tentative plan that will explain what our goal will be each month. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the business of the Finance Committee. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Would you please convene the Property and Facilities Committee?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Tomlinson, call roll, please.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shadalein?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Tony Lombardo to address the six issues we have in committee today.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, members of the board. Item number one is a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve the schematic design of the LSU Stevenson Veterinary Hospital. The hospital project is completing the schematic design phase of development, and we have the accompanying exterior elevations prepared by Tipton and Associates. In association with BDA Architects, we have representatives from the firm to walk you through the schematic design.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege to be your tour guide briefly here through the Stevenson Veterinary Hospital. This is a, a great project for the vet school as well as the university. This will be the public interface with the veterinary school. Roughly thirty-six thousand square feet on two floors, twenty on the first floor, public access. More student-oriented and staff-oriented on the second floor. So if we could just go quickly, I know our time is short, but a few things to point out to you here. This is a part of an overall master plan development here at the veterinary school. So this will be the first of pieces to come yet. It is correlated with what exists in terms of circulation, and it is looking far ahead into the future in terms of how planning and parking and future development will happen on this site and preserving green space and things that are critical and important to the School of Veterinary Medicine in the long run. You see a bit of the local precinct site, and you notice a number of arrows there that begin to reflect the fact that this is, this is a connected piece of architectural fabric, not one that is distinct. I will have to say, it is both a very rich site and a challenging one in terms of its context. And so to understand the fabric that you're working with and, and begin to connect to that in the future is important. First floor here is largely a public interface space, green being where you, as a, a pet owner, might interface with staff, and then some of the services that you might entertain in yellow. And then on the second floor, staff and student teaching space on that second level. The, the thing here that's really interesting is there's outdoor space at both levels, and we'll see that in some of the images. So this would be a public access, much more open, much lower in scale, much less intimidating than what you begin to interface with now. A wide shade and veranda, and so the building is shading itself and creating cover for your, your folks that are entering. And what's really interesting here is the geometry of the building understands its context. It works with the background, just does it in a much lighter-handed way and a, a much more friendly way in terms of how you might interface with the public. And then giving you a bit of a view of how staff might engage in understanding those spaces at an upper level that are also outdoors, but where staff can move back and forth on a service level at this facility. So with that, I'm certainly happy to answer questions that you might have or address any, any other items.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Do we have a, a timeline on this project, or?
Tony, do you wanna address that? We, we are moving aggressively to try and finish construction documents end of... Beginning of next year to have this project ready for bid on market.
Okay. So plan's ready by?
Yes, sir.
Got you. Okay.
The intent is for full completion by the end of 2020. Opening sometime in 2021, early 2021.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Yeah, motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Without objection, the motion is adopted. Item two, Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Item two, request from LSU A&amp;M to authorize an agreement with Illinois Central Railroad Company and Baton Rouge Area Foundation and others regarding rail line crossings. In January two thousand sixteen, the board approved a non-binding MOU that outlined negotiations between LSU, BRAF, and the Illinois Central Railroad Co- company to facilitate, take construction of a new railroad crossing within the boundaries of the new water campus. LSU has a prominent presence at the water campus via the river modeling facility. And the railroad company will allow a, a new railroad crossing at the water campus only if an existing railroad crossing is closed within East Baton Rouge Parish. We've identified that closure at, at the entry, the current entry to FETI or Fireman's Training Institute. To do this, we have to construct a new road that ties to Ben Hur and create a new entry point for that facility. BRAF has agreed to pay for that road structure, and we are working through the agreements to get that done. And we'll return to you with a lease, a construction lease. If, if the financial cost triggers, that it return to the board. If not, we will conduct that on the campus and, and, and move this project along.
Any questions on item two? Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So move.
Second? Any objection? Without objection, the motion is adopted. Item three, please.
Item three is a request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to approve a cooperative endeavor agreement between the LSU Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors of Community and Technical Colleges on behalf of Delgado Community College. LSU Health Sciences Center owns an eight-story building located at fifteen forty-two Tulane Avenue in New Orleans with about fifty percent of the building occupied by LSU School of Medicine and the other half currently vacant. Once renovations are completed to the interim LSU hospital building, the School of Medicine will vacate the Tulane Avenue building and relocate permanently to the ILH. This cooperative endeavor agreement will transfer the title of, to LCTCS of the Tulane Avenue building. But it will allow LSU to continue to occupy the space for up to five years, allowing us the flex, flexibility to stay where they are during the renovation of the ILH.
Are there any questions? Doc, you have any comments on it?
I can just give you a little background on this. In two thousand seven, after Katrina, we did a master planning exercise to look at where the landscape would change. New hospital being built on the other side of, of Claiborne Avenue from where we had been before. As he indicated, only fifty percent of the old medical school building is able to be occupied. The back part was built at the same time as Charity Hospital, nineteen thirty-nine. And when Katrina flooded the building, FEMA came in and lifted the pumps and the actual switch gears to the second stage, second story. But when you turn on water pressure, the back part blows out. So only half of that building is usable. It's thirty-something million dollars to do any renovations, but it doesn't make sense to put that money into that plant since all of our future is on the other side of the interstate. So Delgado, as it turns out, needed two hundred thousand square feet. They have capital outlay to expand their nursing school and allied health schools, which are feeders for our schools. And it would bring them into the downtown medical district, so it's a win for everybody here. I'm spending a million dollars a year in maintenance of that building right now. I don't wanna have another derelict building in the neighborhood. They've agreed that we will transfer the building to them. They will start maintaining the building immediately. We will continue to reside there rent-free during the time of our construction, and they will start their early architectural design and, and development. So it's a win for everybody, and we are supporting this resolution.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Item four, request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to approve the assignment to LSU Health Foundation of the UMCMC right-to-use possession and occupancy as to Block Four Sixty-Six for construction of parking garage for hospital.
The LSU Health Sciences Center through the LSU Board of Supervisors owns the property beneath the new University Medical Center and those grounds. But the hospital, University Medical Center, has right of use of the property for their purposes. What we would like to do, the, UMC wants to build a new parking garage. They would like to collaborate with our Health Foundation to do this. Our Health Foundation would then take right of use of that property. They would do a public-private partnership to build a parking garage for UMC. They would have a, a contract with UMC to pay the, for the parking spaces. It's a benefit for everyone, and we can get moving with that very quickly. So we support that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions?
Question. Who would utilize a parking garage?
UMC and their patients and faculty and staff.
They need more parking.
Right. They out of parking already. They're out of a lot of space already.
I witnessed that yesterday. It was jam-packed.
Right.
Thank you. Are there any... A motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, since I represent this board on the UMCMC board, out of the abundance of caution, I would like to recuse myself from this item in voting.
Duly noted, Madam Secretary. Thank you. Any further questions? Without objection, resolution's adopted. Thank you. Item number five.
Request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to approve the purchase of land in Squares Four Ninety-Nine and Five Eighteen, First District, New Orleans. This proposes to purchase the non-state-owned parcels of land adjacent to LSU Health Sciences Center-owned properties in Square Four Ninety-Nine and Five Eighteen. Dr. O'Yay?
Again, this is part of our overall campus plan that we'd like to expand to this area. It's right, sort of interdigitating within our current campus, and we'd like to be able to complete some of that activity. There's an area that we could use to transform to a surface parking there.
Are there any questions?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It moved? Second?
Second.
Without objection, the motion is adopted. Thank you.
Item six, request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to approve a lease agreement with University Medical Center Management Corporation for parking spaces at the South Romain Street Garage located on the LSU Health Sciences Center downtown campus.
Feel like I'm going into real estate. We, we currently have a parking lot, surface parking lots behind the university interim hospital. It goes all the way to Poitras. We're in the plans of building through a public-private partnership new student housing in that area across the street. Currently, UMC, we have granted them right of use for surface parking in the area across the street from where that development will take place. And we're gonna need to move them out to, to have staging areas to build the student housing. So we're gonna lease them in the interim until their new parking garage gets built with us. We're gonna lease them the top floor of our current parking garage. We have the space there. And it'll be an interim step for them. As we move forward with the overall development, we will create additional parking in that area to serve our faculty as well as their patients.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, for the same reasons, I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
Let the record reflect. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes the business of this committee.
Thank you very much.
There a motion to adjourn it?
I move. Second.
Moved in second. Any objection? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Ms. Jones, would you please convene the Athletics Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Tomlinson, please call roll. Ms. Jones? Here. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armentor? Mr. Blossman?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum. Thank you, Stephanie. At this time, I'll ask Mark Ewing to present items one and four.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, everybody. First of all, let me give a little shout-out for Stephanie over there. She's helped us with public records requests in athletics for many years, and it's a big task, and we get them every week, numerous ones, and she's always rise up to occasion. We sure do appreciate your help. Joe would have loved to have been here today. He's at an SEC meeting for athletic directors, along with Miriam Seeger for the SWAs, so he couldn't be here, so he found a guy with the most gray hair and told him to go up, and that was me. So I'm here to present the contracts for our two swimming and diving coaches. They're co-head coaches. It's David Guyer and Coach Doug Schaefer. They've been our co-head coaches for over nine seasons now. They've produced numerous SEC champions, and they've had 25, over 25 NCAA All-Americans. I want to try and get vague numbers so they don't hold me to them. They've had several, on academic side, they've had several finalists with the SEC Boyd McWhorter Award. That's a postgraduate award. They've had numerous SEC Divers of the Year. Coach Schaefer in season 16, 17, won the men's SEC Coach of the Year Award. Their sport annually has a great FPR scores, and their student athletes participate in all sorts of community activities. They're a great bunch of student athletes, and we're proud of them. To talk a little bit about the contract, you see, basically, it's a contract for the total compensation to go from 110,000 to 115,000 for this fiscal year, and for next fiscal year, go up to 120,000. So it's not an excessive pay increase, but it does keep them in line with some of the other coaches in the conference. Any questions?
I'll move the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Without objection, the motion is adopted. Any objections? The motion is adopted. Okay, Mark, please proceed with item four.
Okay. Next, item four is the head coach's contract for Coach Nikki Caldwell-Fargus. You'll notice it says Caldwell on the contract. We amended it, and she's gotten married since we've done her contract, so her last name is Fargus now. She's coached for seven years. Six of those seven years, she's made the NCAA tournament. Her, two of her teams advanced to the Sweet 16. She has had, like, three of the seven years, her teams have had a perfect 1,000 APR score, which we stress the academic side, and that's very important, and we're proud of that. And the SEC does honor those who achieve that 1,000 score. Also, she's had 23 players who've earned SEC Athlete of the Year awards academically. Any questions? Let me talk about the contract. Basically, it's adding three seasons to her contract right now. There are, her compensation does not change, but the incentives do increase. So in other words, the more successful the program is in the next few years, the more she'll be awarded in compensation for postseason accomplishments. So again, the amount doesn't change unless we're very successful in the future, so...
Are there any questions?
I'll move the request.
Second.
Second.
Great. Well, without objection, the motion is adopted.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll ask Chancellor Clark to present items two and three.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am here to present for three coaches' contracts for your approval. The first contract is with our head basketball coach. Three years ago, he was making the same salary as the coach at LSU Alexandria, and he currently makes 57,000 at LSU Shreveport. You'll recall, a couple of board meetings ago, you approved a contract for $80,000. And so there is now a very significant difference between our two coaches, and the LSU's coach pointed out that he won both times this season, and we were rated number two in the country, and we're about to beat them again, but we got knocked off in the semifinal. But that's his saying that. But anyway, in looking at what we wanted to do with our coaches, we had our men's basketball, women's basketball, and baseball coach before you. They all won their conference tournament for Kyle Blankenship, just like with Coach Larry Cordero. I think the LSU system is blessed to have three really good coaches. I think you have basketball year startings, are you not? Four. So, you know, the coaches, but Larry Cordero's done some excellent things. Ours has won three Coach of the Year awards. He's had nine All-Americans. He's been to the NAIA National Tournament six straight years that he's coached. So what we're proposing is to move his salary from 57,680 to 70,000, not to 80, to 70,000, and the following year, 72,500. There are some incentives, but unlike the incentives on this campus, if he were to have all of his incentives, it would have been 1,750, would be 1,750. So it's not a huge amount of incentives, but there are incentives, including for academic incentives. We also have, in the coaches' contracts, including with this one, expectations of fundraising that we've never had before for goals for our coaches in the program. So in both case, all three cases, what they're expected to raise is far above what we're asking. So that's what we have with Kyle Blankenship. Matt Cross is our women's cross-country coach. He ended up with the best record at 31-2 that we've ever had for women's basketball, ended up number 11 in the country before the tournament. We had other schools attempting to recruit both these coaches immediately after the tournament ended. Again, similar to the other contract I mentioned, there is an expectation of goals of fundraising. It increases the coach's salary for women's basketball, 2,500 in the first year, 1,250 in the second year. Baseball coach is Brent LaVell, and he won the conference tournament and has been very successful in his two years. He also is being highly recruited against us for other schools. His contract is not a large increase either. It'll go up 2,500 in the first year and 1,250 in the second year. His expectations of fundraising are higher. His are 20,000 a year. The other two have a lesser amount. So those are the coaches, and those are what they've accomplished.
I'd like to comment that the athletic programs and their leadership are a great asset to the LSU Shreveport campus.
Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any objection? Without objection, the motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll hear the next item, Chancellor.
So the next is our athletic AD, and I think it's important to note for athletics that 85% of students who complete eligibility have been graduating with us over the last three years. And I think that's really important, because we heard today earlier, it's just not about admitting students to LSU A&amp;M, and it's not just about us going out to run a player. And that's also true, I know, with our competition with LSU Alexandria, the commitment to actually have a student athlete come, be a student, and graduate. And over 50% of our student athletes have a 3.0 average. We have the study hall for our student athletes is in our Student Success Center. We take that very, very much important, what we do with the student athlete. And I think the successes that we've had, our athletic director has done a terrific job. To give you an example, what I have attributed to his personal fundraising has been 67,000 last year. His contract has a goal this year for 100,000, and it goes up 50,000 a year after that. So it's a three-year contract. So again, I think he's done a terrific job. Somehow, he retained these coaches because after the basketball coaches, both were highly recruited after this last tournament.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Second?
Second.
Any objections?
Thank you.
Without objection, the motion is adopted. Thank you, Chancellor. I believe this completes the business of the committee. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chairman, the athletics committee has completed its agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Mr. Dampf, would you please convene the very first meeting of the newly-created Legal Affairs Committee, and Counselor, pretend as if a very mean and impatient judge were there.
Yes, sir. Ms. Tomlinson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Armentor? Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner, would you please explain Act 666 to us?
It would be a pleasure, and I'd like to thank the board, and the chair in particular, for creating the Legal Affairs Committee with my deepest and sincerest appreciation.
Glad to know.
Act 666...
We have a sincerity task. We'll be giving you that.
Act 666, apparently named by somebody with a sense of humor in the legislature, has to do with guaranteeing what is already guaranteed by the Constitution, but guaranteeing to all the freedom of expression on campus. I'd ask my deputy general counsel, Trey Jones, to come on up. This is as good a time as any for those of you who haven't met him to meet him. Trey joined us a few years ago, year and a half ago, from...
One year ago.
One year ago?
Wow.
God.
It's like a lifetime.
Every day, every day I work with him seems like a lifetime. From Rodell Parsons here in town, and has done great, great work. Trey worked with the legislative team and Mr. Drati on sort of attempting to help the legislature craft this document in a way that didn't completely eviscerate our ability to control some of the events on campus and protect our students from a safety standpoint and a disruption standpoint. So Act 666 requires each institution in the state to do what we're doing now, which is to adopt a resolution affirming that it will follow Act 666. Trey, anything you want to add?
Sure. Good afternoon to the chair and to the committee. Just a little background on Act 666. It was passed by the legislature this year and gave directives to not only the campuses, but also the governing boards, such as this one. It really implemented what already exists. So largely, we've been in compliance with this, and this is not directed to a problem at LSU. This is a national concern, one pushed by free speech organizations, and we're just one state of many, I think 14 or 15, that have adopted laws like this. It's particularly in response to things that have happened in California particularly, and that's the hecklers veto, where speech has been shut down because of threats of violence or other coercion. That also has not been a big problem at LSU. But we were already having this discussion before Act 66, 666 was passed. We historically have been a quiet university when it comes to things like this, but we do have areas like Free Speech Alley that we've recognized as being general free speech zones. We've had informal rules that directed people to their, to the Free Speech Alley and other areas for free speech discussions. This statute changes that a little bit. It's declaring that any open area that's publicly accessible on the university campus is a traditional public forum for speech purposes. And what that means is that students, faculty, members of the general public are free to assemble and exercise their free speech rights there. They don't have to register. They don't have to clear it with us, as long as they abide by the First Amendment. Now, that's a broad brush. As long as they're not defaming anyone, there's no obscenity, and commercial speech is accepted, we have to be careful about these things. We've already moved in that direction to implementing policies, and we'll be in a process of letting the campus know that this is available to the general community. So what we have now is a resolution before the board that's required under the statute. The language of it is practically dictated in the act itself. Not a lot of leeway there. We've already started the permanent memorandum process at LSU, and we've drafted a policy that is in the pipeline. As of now, the primary focus of this is that the university has to acknowledge that it's not the role of the university to protect students from speech they may find offensive. Hate speech or other protected type of speech is allowed on campus, and the university is not the gatekeeper of speech which people find to be offensive or unfortunate. And so we will push the permanent memorandum around to all of the universities, and then to the extent we need to, we'll develop campus-specific policies on the freedom of speech. The new law also requires that we, that the university not discriminate against student organizations based on belief. That also has not been a problem at LSU. We've been abiding by that rule already. And finally, the university remains empowered to exercise time, place, and manner restrictions on speech. We are feeling this out. We've had informal rules in place, such as no demonstrations in the quad, that we are reevaluating, because that is a traditional public forum at this point. But we have the right to control assembly, control speech, to the extent it disrupts our educational mission, and that's exactly what we'll do. We'll put policies in place to protect that. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
I just want to make a comment. He's correct about having free speech for students. It's very important for students to feel like they can assemble and have free speech. And again, it's not a problem on our campus, but I'm just in agreement with this resolution for that need.
And what this act actually does is it requires the university to be more reactive than proactive. Many universities, and I don't put LSU in this group, have put laws or regulations in place that prevent the speech out of concern of what people may be exposed to, or the fact that you may hear a bullhorn in a classroom. We have to be more reactive as opposed to proactive in chilling the speech before it happens.
Sir, any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to approve? I move that we adopt the... Second?
Second.
Any objection? No objections approved. That completes our...
Thank you very much. We will adjourn for a lunch break and return at 1:15? 1:15.
That sounds good.